Oh, yes.
All right, everybody. Welcome to the city council meeting for the city of Bonny Lake for October 10th, 2023. Very first thing we do is stand and salute our flag. So.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, Madam Clerk, could you call a roll, please?
Mayor McCullough.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton. Councilmember McLeimans.
Here.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
All right, have we a motion for Councilmember Fullerton?
So moved.
Second. All right, all in favor of excusing Councilmember Fullerton for her Italian cruise say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. And just for the record, Paula and I will be on an Alaskan cruise this time next week. So I hope you have the same courtesy for me.
We'll remember to excuse you.
All right. Not seeing any agenda modifications. We do have two proclamations and a presentation. So we will start with the proclamation for the First Responders Appreciation Day. So whereas Congress and the President of the United States have designated October 28th as First Responders Day, and whereas first responders include both professional and volunteer 911 operators and dispatchers, law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical services personnel, search and rescue teams, pilots and divers, emergency management professionals, nurses, paramedics, doctors, medical evacuation pilots, road maintenance personnel, and military personnel, and other roles in the public safety sector, and whereas first responders are a vital part of our communities whose skills often make the difference between life and death while dedicating their lives to public service, education, and extensive training, courage, selfless concern for the welfare and protection of others, their property, and the law environment, and whereas these courageous men and women are our primary and best defense against all emergencies that threaten our communities, they are quick to respond at a moment's notice to be too dangerous and distressing situations that threaten our communities and come to aid of citizens who often, while often risking their own safety and lives, to selflessly run into danger and protect others. And they volunteer in our schools and community organizations. And whereas first responders respond to emergencies without hesitation when the call of duty arises, and tirelessly give of their time and energy in humanitarian efforts, making themselves available every hour of the day, every day of the year, and whereas the services, dedication, and commitment of first responders deserve to be recognized and honored. Now, therefore, I, Michael McCullough, Mayor of Bonny Lake, with the full backing and encouragement of the entirety of the Bonny Lake City Council, do hereby proclaim October 23rd through October 29th, 2023, as First Responder, as National First Responders Week, and proclaim October 28th, 2023, to be First Responders Appreciation Day in the city of Bonny Lake, and encourage all citizens to celebrate the service and sacrifice of first responders who make our communities the best in which to live, work, and raise a family. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Bonny Lake to be affixed this 10th day of October 2023.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. I just want to let you know and the rest of council that every year, myself, my Landscap members go to the Bonny Lake PD Fire Department and substations in the Fire Department and Buckley, and we give them gifts and big goods and tell them how much we appreciate them, along with posters from the schools for First Responders Day. So we take this beyond the city council and the Landscap Institute every year, this time of year.
Oh, absolutely. I was hoping we could make it First Responders Month. I do, that is very charitable.
Recognize them.
Okay, now we have our second proclamation. This will be Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is held each October to unite advocates across the nation in their efforts to end domestic violence, and whereas according to the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, one in four women and one in nine men in the U.S. will experience sexual or physical violence or stalking by an intimate partner during their lifetime. And whereas domestic violence can happen to anyone and is present in every community, including the Bonny Lake community, and whereas patterns of abusive behavior include physical and sexual assault, emotional abuse, isolation from friends and family, monitoring and controlling another's finances to gain power and control over them, and whereas children who grow up in violent homes are likely to also be abused and neglected, and whereas the city of Bonny Lake believes that our community, including every resident, should be, or every residence, should be a place of safety for all individuals. And whereas the city's Office of the Prosecuting Attorney prosecutes domestic violence-related cases and hold perpetrators accountable for their actions, excuse me, and whereas the city helps victims obtain resources and discuss safety plans, and whereas the city is grateful for the remarkable people and organizations that offer care and critical services to survivors of domestic violence, and remains committed to building a community where all people can feel safe and respected and live free from abuse, I now, therefore, I, Michael McCullough, Mayor of Bonny Lake, with the full backing and encouragement of the entirety of the Bonny Lake City Council, do hereby proclaim that Bonny Lake declares October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Bonny Lake, and encourages all citizens to actively stand against domestic violence in our community. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the city, the seal of the city of Bonny Lake to be affixed on this 10th day of October 2023. And I believe we have our presentation.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. My name is Tanya Tenell Thornhill, and I am with Exodus Housing. And what we do is we help households get back into housing after fleeing from or attempting to flee from domestic violence. And then we work with them through our case management services to help them get back on their feet until they are ready to exit our program and be on their own. I'm going to turn this over to Lena. She is a case manager. She'll introduce herself, give you a little bit about what she does, and then go into our PowerPoint.
Hello, my name is Lena Abu Laban. I am a case manager with Exodus Housing. So Exodus started in 2001 to offer housing and case management for families with low income and homeless. In 2009, Exodus converted to 100% to help clients who is fleeing domestic violence or attempting to flee. We are full-time staff working to help clients. This year, our budget is over $1 million from government help, private funding, or local organizations. We offer case management meetings for clients who is fleeing domestic violence, and we meet with them every month and help them to set up goals and budget. Their meetings is just helping them to obtain housing, and we offer rental assistance and clients responsible for 30% of their income. Exodus Housing pays all their moving costs. Domestic violence is an abusive behavior toward another person, has no limits, and can affect anyone in the form of power or control. It has long-lasting effects. Domestic violence develops over time by winning the victim's trust. Type of abuse is physical, sexual, emotional, dragging through legal system, no access to money, or contact with families, forcing criminal behavior. DV power and control abuse. This will shows the abusive relationship with the abuser. This includes example of different type of strategies and behaviors showing the abusers. The abuse may be physical or emotional or other type of physical violence. So the average number of, the average number of times victims leave their abuser is seven times. Why do survivors stay? So many reasons. Financially, they depend on their abuser for their basic needs. They have children in common. They worry to lose them. Or having nowhere to go, don't have any, they don't want to be homeless. The abuser threatening to kill them or kill their family if they leave. They have leave system. They don't want to leave their abusers or the love for the abuser and hope for change. Common barriers. Barriers as a result of DV. Depression, mental health, lack of support system or any resources, criminal charges, no driver license, financially, no money, no access to bank accounts. Abuser took their documents, poor rental history. So during our case, case management meeting every month with the clients, we help them to be self-sufficient. And we set up goals and long-term goals with them to give them community resources and help them to achieve their goals. Also, we help them set up budget because we want our clients to understand that maintaining a solid financial situation is more important than how much money they make. Our clients are blessed to have such a great support from local organizations, sometimes from individuals donating stuff, money, gift cards. We help clients when they move into their house. During 2022, we served 130 households, 2375 individuals, and 24 were children. Our program goal is to help clients maintain housing and be self-sufficient. We have a success story that client had to run away from her abuser from different state, came to Washington State with two kids, with her job, with no money, no support system in Washington State. She stayed in a hotel paid by another agency. Her income was only $10, 528. We helped her to be housed. We helped her to fix her car and get a job. And now she's, she achieved her goal by getting a really good paying job and stay housed.
Thank you, Lena. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, I do have a question, if you don't mind. I was, look, first of all, my understanding, Exodus House, it's not a shelter, is it?
Correct. We are housing only. It's a rapid rehousing program, which in the past we had transitional housing, which was a two- to three-year program. Rapid rehousing is a little bit shorter of a program. It's designed to really help people get on their feet, like from the very get-go, from the time they enter the program. And then within about a year, they would be exiting our program.
I see. And how's the outreach? And how do people find out about you mostly?
Do you want to talk about coordinated entry?
We don't get any direct referrals. We get all our referral from Pierce County Coordinated Entry. They do the intake with them, then they refer them to us.
I see. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just add, we do have a website if anybody's interested. It's just exodishousing.org. So sometimes people find us there. They find our phone number, call us. But like Lena said, we can't take any direct referrals. We even have to refer them back to coordinated entry, and then maybe they'll come back to us.
They sometimes come to CFF, too, our monthly meetings, to communicate with families. You're there sometimes for those meetings, too. Can you meet your families?
Yes, yes, yes.
And can I talk to you after the meeting tonight, too? Thank you.
Okay. Well, anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's a great service you provide.
Thank you, Tanya.
All right. So seeing that there is no public hearings, we'll go on to citizen commentary. This is your time to address the Council on City Business. The city will now enable video and microphone for those attending virtually. You will need to turn on your video and microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen or heard. We will start with those who are here in person and move to the virtual comments afterwards. You will have five minutes. State your name, address for the record, please. And I do wish to make an announcement that citizen commentary is roughly about city business only. We are not here to attack any individuals, criticize any individuals, named or unnamed. If we do start going down that road, we will cut off your microphone. You understand? Thank you. Who wants to approach the podium and start talking?
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully you know me by now.
We do.
I walk across the park a lot. I'm Erin Muskie of the Bonny Lake Library. I've got a lot to say in five minutes to say it in. First of all, I wasn't able to make a meeting here in September, so I would just like to extend my thanks to everyone who was involved in Beautify Bonny Lake this year. It was such a wonderful event. It was so well organized. I was out at Liberty Ridge Elementary with Dr. Dent and a lot of the students, and it was just, it's a really positive event. And so I wanted to just say thank you. I know Justin Evans and a lot of you put a lot of work into that. So thank you so much for that. Um, library updates. We had a really busy summer, and I didn't get to come in September and talk about that. So I just wanted to catch you up to speed on our summer reading program. It was very, very busy, and there are so many statistics and stories I could share, but I'm going to just choose one. Every year, the Pierce County Library Foundation funds free books for kids that complete their reading goals over the course of the summer. Kids get, kids and teens get to come in and choose a free book every time they meet one of those goals. And so this year, over the course of the summer, we were able to put, and I wrote it down so I would remember, 1,375 books into the hands of local kids and teens. And those are books that they get to keep, they get to build their home library, and we hope that it will help them fight the summer's slide in reading skill and also just become lifelong readers. So that was a really wonderful thing. I'm going to throw one more number, actually, since I think I'm okay on time. We had several programs over the summer, and we had 702 participants in our summer programs for all ages, which is really impressive if you think about the fact that our fire code for our meeting room is 23. That means we had a really busy, active summer with a lot of programs going on. This fall is also seeing a lot of programs come to the library. We started our fall storytimes a couple of weeks ago. We had almost 70 people in attendance at the first one. We've had so many that we've had to move storytimes out of the meeting room and into the back area of the library to be able to handle the capacity. We've had a really fun collaboration with the community garden. We did a storytime onsite at the garden in September. Kids got to plant a radish. They got to go digging for potatoes. They got to eat cherry tomatoes and get a tour of the garden. That was really fun. We also, a few months ago, had a regular citizen who comes in who has moved here from Ukraine and said she was really having trouble finding community, and she loves to craft. So in direct response to that, we've started an adult crafting series where people can come and they can work on the craft that we have at the library, or they can bring in a craft of their own if they're knitting something or working on something, just to have a little bit of opportunity for connection. So that's my super quick library update. Finally, I wanted to let you know, we've been doing some work with the city planning department as they're engaged in their planning process and wanting community feedback. So we're working with them to be able to host info sessions at the library and have flyers available to everyone. So I just wanted to put out, actually, a two-part invite. If any of you on city council or in any of the city departments have a need like that, please do contact me so we can arrange something. The other thing that I've done with the planning department, one of my other hats in the community is I'm a member of the Bonny Lake to Holly and Rotary Club, and I have volunteered myself to arrange speakers at the club meetings. So we are also happy to host any of you at a Rotary Club to talk about your work with the city, what you're doing, and what's coming up as well. I think I'm under five minutes, right?
Please.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Erin.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is anybody else for the good of the order?
Council Mayor Dan Decker, past council member out of 2017 East Bonny Lake, Washington. I'll be speaking on the First Amendment tonight, and if anyone wishes to stop me, they'll be under color of law and violation. The whole truth and nothing but the truth. The First Amendment says that the truth is allowable. Liars are willing to take the time needed to establish false credibility by ensuring the truth of the people and their surroundings. For the chronic deceiver, the lie has to become highly elaborate. It is, it is going to be maintained, it is going to be maintained over time. Someone said something like, gee, I thought I was lying. No. Now, no one will ever talk to me or help me. That is except stupid people that don't know anything. All I can say is, hey, you're caught in a lie. The First Amendment protects you. Shame on the First Amendment. Then said, all I'm doing is lying to the people to get what I want. Oh, wait a minute. That's deception. That's fraud. So what if I'm not telling the truth? It's not against the law to lie, but it is against the law to be in fraud. I'm protected by the First Amendment of the Constitutionals, of the Constitution. Personal ethics are meaningless. They are not the law. But the First Amendment, watch out for it. It can bite you. So what if I'm lying to the people? The person who told misleading, who, excuse me, the person was told misleading the people is wrong, and the problem should be fixed. And then said, oh, think about it. It may or may not have been thought about, thought about it, but the lie got larger and larger. The First Amendment protects liars. Liars are interesting people. They like to do things that aren't true. And sometimes they fall into deception and fraud. I got an email from a person. I'm going to read it to you straight out what it said. There's some language in it that I don't appreciate. Number one, it was none of your fucking business. Language about it. I hope he never speaks to you again. Three, you are the most negative person and artistic person. I will dance when your people, when your day comes, because it will. Karma is going to come up and bite you in the ass. Hmm. Who said that? Well, some stupid old lady. Second item, council, as you most likely know, Tacoma puts fluoride in their drinking water. Fluoride helps make people stupid. Is there fluoride in our city water coming from Tacoma? Why, yes, there is. What I'm saying here is, a while back, the council said no fluoride in our water. Well, where the fluoride comes from in Tacoma should be removed from our water. And I hope this microphone wasn't turned off while I was speaking, because I will be listening to hear what was said on it. Thank you very much. Just remember, don't let the First Amendment bite you in the ass.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Decker. Is there anybody else for the good of the order? Okay, now we will move on to those who are virtual. You'll have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, please. Well, I thought that was somebody virtual, though. Okay, well, the city will now disable all video and microphone for those attending virtually. And next, we will have committee reports. Can we hear from the finance committee, please? Deputy Mayor, you still here?
Yeah. Yeah, sorry. The finance committee meeting was canceled because there's nothing on the agenda. So we should meet again in two weeks.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Can we hear from Community Development?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet on October 3rd. Single item on our agenda, though. We just were focused on looking at the future adoption of possible six-year transportation improvement program, which is runs from 2024, 2029. It's kind of something that the city does every year. It's kind of a leftover, almost pre-GMA law requirement. It does kind of interlace with some of the comprehensive plan items, but there'll be a future public hearing on that, and then the council, likely full council, will get a weigh-in on all that. It's just, it's not too terribly important, just more of a thing that we have to do. So don't get too hung up on ultra details of it, but it is important. So, you know, it's kind of an interesting one. Thank you.
Oh, well, I don't get hung up on the ultra details of anything.
It's a weird one. It's really strange.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. No, I know.
Just a note to sell.
All right. Public Safety Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety meeting met tonight. I want to thank Council, Deputy Mayor Carter for sitting in for Councilmember Fullerton in her absence. We had some monthly reports from East Pierce Fire and Rescue. The Edgewood Station shall be in service this Thursday at 0800 hours.
Very good.
Bonny Lake Station is an estimated move date in late June, and they do have 14 recruits in the academy right now. We had a report from new police chief Barry from the Bonny Lake Police Department. In that report, it showed that larceny is down over 50% over 2022. Unfortunately, juvenile arrests are up about 200% over 22, mostly due to stolen vehicles and armed robberies. Burglaries are down, however, approximately 50%, and felony arrests are down 30%. We do have two open positions in the PD. We're looking for either an entry, an exceptional or a lateral. And the Bonny Lake Police Department is participating in the Breast Cancer Awareness Month for the month of October. So you can visit their Facebook page. On that, we'll have a link to donate as well, if anyone wishes to donate. Number four on our list was that. Number five was we had a report from our Emergency Management Manager. Satellite phones have been distributed now, and there is a tentative Lahar scheduled, Lahar, Lahar training, not a Lahar. We can't schedule those. On March 21st at 2000, or March 21st with Sumner Bonny Lake School District, and then we are working on a comprehensive emergency management plan that is due to the state on 31st of December. We will have a presentation from our Emergency Management Department sometime before that. We had a report from the Prosecutor's Office. We had 35 arraignments in the month of September and 491 total hearings. And then we also had a similar presentation on domestic violence. And then we had the one that was given to us tonight. And then we had a report for Q3 and Q4 from our code enforcement. They were able to successfully close 69 cases. However, they also opened up 66. So we have a net of three, three, three down. We had a discussion on AB 23139, Resolution 3182, which is on our consent agenda tonight. It is for out-of-state travel for the Emergency Management Department. The funding was already approved, however, the out-of-state travel had not been. So this is just a little housekeeping, which is why it's on consent for that. We had a discussion on derelict homes, and we also had an open discussion on guardrails throughout the town. And that was it. We approved our minutes and we adjourned.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Please state your name.
Evans.
Couldn't make 500, could you? You had to be 491.
The numbers are the numbers. Hell, the numbers are the numbers.
All right, now we move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, good. So let the record reflect that the consent agenda has been approved unanimously, and seeing no more business, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. See you later, Terry.